When should we, uh? Do you know if Brenda's joining? Should we get going? All right, the regular, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Monday, December 18th, 2023. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Brian Nero is going to lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our end of this.
Thank you. So, um, I don't know if selectwoman Chik is on the line. Brenda, are you?
Coming in.
Oh. Oh, there you go. Hey. Okay, all right, so call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is to hear and approve the minutes of November 15th, 2023. So we'll start with that because I think you and I will be likely abstaining. So motion to approve?
On the table, motion second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, uh, motion to approve? You're the only one.
Yeah, me once.
So I'm gonna, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say no, abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, then can we do November 27th and December 4th together? Seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous. Just wanna thank, item number four, I'd like to thank Alder Crocker for his work on the Committee for Disabilities. He was unable to give another term, so we thank him for all his work. And hopefully in the future, you know, he might take the opportunity to do it again, but thank you. Item number five, reappointments, to hear and act upon the following reappointments. Board of Health, Mark J. Hotchkiss, Democrat, 640 Rolling Hills Drive, term 11/20/23 to 11/20/27. Motion?
Motion, second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Is Mark here today?
Yes, I'm on the line, yeah.
Mark, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, only that I'm happy to serve another term on the Board of Health. I think Sands clearly does a tremendous job running the Board of Health and Santina, Rob and Jill, they all do, I think, a great work and I'm happy to work with them and be on the board for another term.
Thank you. I, thank you for all your work on this board, this very, very important board. Any other comments?
I served with Mark when I served on the Board of Health as the Board of Ed liaison. I'm thankful that he is stepping up to serve again. Always appreciated his calm leadership and his expertise. And I think he will be, the community is well-served by having him serve another four years, so I thank him for stepping up.
Any other comments? The public, any comments? Motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you so much, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Parks and Recreation, Brian Nero, Republican, 105 Mountain Laurel Road, term 11/23 to 11/28. Motion, uh? May I have a? Thank you.
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. Nero, would you like to say a few words? You have to get him to.
Wasn't planning on this, but thank you. Uh, just thank you for, uh, you know, this opportunity to continue your work in Parks and Rec. We got a lot of work ahead of us and look forward to working with that group here.
I would just like to say how pleased I am that you are willing to do this again with all of the plans in front of us for Parks and Recreation and, um, you know, there's, there's a lot to do there and your experience, I've found you to be a really good member of that board. Any other comments?
I worked with Brian, obviously, over the last four years, um, and Bill, who's off next, and they've both been very good members and they are a very busy committee, but they have an awesome director, so good leadership to help.
Okay, any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much, Brian. The next is William Llewellyn, Bill Llewellyn, 320 Morehouse Drive, term 11/23 to 11/28. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Seconded, okay. Mr. Llewellyn, would you like to say a few words? By the way, Mr. Llewellyn coached my daughter in softball many years ago.
Yeah, I was also here in town, I worked in high school football. I know the importance of the Parks and Recreation Department around in terms of the kids, the youth, and adults as well, so I know we have a master plan in front of us, it's pretty big, but we hope to, you know, chip away at it as fast as we can because I really think, you know, the field's doing me a lot of improvement this time. I do what I can to help push it along, so thank you for the opportunity again to serve. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I can't help but notice your incredible involvement in all things Parks and Rec over the years. Anyone else like to say anything?
Just thank you both for serving. The Parks and Rec plan is quite comprehensive and I really look forward to working with the Commission to move a lot of those projects forward in coordination with the many other plans that we have for this community. You know, competing interests are hard, but we are definitely a community that values our parks and our opportunities for recreation from our infants all the way up to our seniors, so I thank these gentlemen for stepping up and continuing to lead. I think their expertise will be invaluable in moving us forward.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much, Bill. Next is item 5C, Water Pollution Control Authority, Matthew Mancisi, 477 Aaron Hill Road, term 11/23 to 11/27. Do I have a motion?
Yes, second.
Matt, yeah, say a few words.
Similar to what everybody else said, thanks for the opportunity to continue on. Lots of big projects coming up with the WPCA and taking things up from governance and oversight, so I'm just, I'm happy to be a part of it.
I would just like to say how incredibly fortunate we are to have you on this board. It's absolutely incredible to me that we have someone with such expertise specifically in this area and thank goodness that you're willing to do another term because it's going to be an interesting couple of years. Any other comments?
Yes, so Matt, obviously, we've worked together and you have been invaluable, um, really on the board and so tremendously helpful because as was just stated, we have extreme issues and frankly, none of the projects that have been sitting on that waterfall for WPCA for a long time have even been touched. And so your expertise has been extraordinarily helpful and I look forward to seeing some of those things get done. So thank you for doing it because I know it's not one of those easy boards that you just step in, you walk in and out, that's, it takes a lot of effort and you did put a lot of time in it, we do appreciate it, so I'm lucky.
It's been fun.
Well, it may not sound like it.
It's Matt.
It may not sound like it, but this is one of the more interesting.
It's hard work.
So any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Matt, for stepping up again. Okay, uh, to item number six, appointments, A, Board of Health, Henry Yun, 280 Ryder's Lane, term 11/23 to 11/27. And he's replacing Diane Morots, whose term expired and we thank Diane for all her hard work. May I have a motion?
Second, sorry.
Thank you. Is Henry on the phone or?
Yes, good afternoon. Again, just very briefly, it's been an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Fairfield in the past on the Board of Health. I appreciate for Selectmen, you and your team's confidence in me to offer me this opportunity again and to collaborate again with this great, uh, great team at the Health Department, so thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to say that having observed Henry in the past, he took some time off this board, but he actually was Chair of this board for a while and he did a wonderful job through, through COVID and his background is like 100% what we would be looking for in this, in this, in this board, so thank you so much for serving, Henry. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say that he, he termed out and is why he had to go come off, but he is obviously a perfect fit for the board and Sands thinks he's great too, so thank you for stepping up, Henry, you're really, very much appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Yun, I served with Henry during the pandemic and also as Chair of the Board of Ed, we just called on him for just other, whenever there were issues in schools from even indoor air quality, helping with fill pile, so he, um, his expertise runs a gamut of public health issues and I think he's a real asset to this board and we're very appreciative that you're coming back on board.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Henry, Dr. Yun, thank you so much for stepping up again and we're so fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
The item 6B, Flood and Erosion Control Board, Charles Abercrombie, 251 Penfield Road, term 11/23 to 11/28, may I have a motion? Okay, thank you. Is Chuck, oh, hey, how are you?
First of all, thank you for considering my application. I think we can all agree that as time goes on, erosion and flooding and sea level rise are going to become very important problems for Fairfield, especially as a result, I think the boards become more important. And I hope I can simply make a meaningful contribution to identifying and implementing real solutions to the health network center.
Well, I think people on the board are excited that you're joining, so thank you for stepping up to do that and it will be challenging, I recognize. Any other, uh, any other board?
Nice to see you. You, you have a long history of service in the area, so it's your, you're welcome addition.
Thank you.
Um, any?
Thank you, we're having a great, um, this is definitely an issue across coastal Connecticut that we need to be paying a close eye on and appreciate just knowledgeable people stepping up to serve, so thank you.
And thank you to Paul Landino, whose term expired. Thank you for all your work over the years. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thanks so much, Chuck. So C, HVAC Indoor Air Quality Building Committee, this requires RTM approval. Jeffrey Galdenzi, 118 Green Knolls Lane, term May 23 through completion, however long that may take. He's replacing Jason Lee, who was elected to the Board of Ed on 11/7/23. May I have a motion? I think.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff, would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you for your consideration for the board. I want to thank Mr. Lee, it's sort of frightening to think you have to go to the BOE to get off the Commission. But I'm looking forward to parlaying the, my RTM experience and helping with the Commission. There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of money and a lot of work to be done at the schools over the next, next number of years.
This is such an important thing that you're stepping up to do and it could take a long time and you're the right person for it, you're very detail oriented and you're good with numbers and really appreciate that you're willing to do this. Uh, any other comments?
I echo that. I think that Mr. Galdenzi's experience on the RTM and his professional background in project management and interest in HVAC systems and knowledge of that will be a asset to the committee, especially with the tight, the tight timeline that project management is going to be a key asset to have, so I thank him for stepping forward and helping the committee just move this forward because as we know from our last meeting, the deadlines are tight. We have, you know, facing deadlines for our grants and sure that we stay on that timeline, so thank you for, for voting.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeff, this, really, thank you for this. D60 Police and Fire Retirement Board, Kenneth Brackfeld, 443 Lally Boulevard, term 11/23 to 11/26. He's replacing Nicholas Caruso and we thank Nick for his service. I've left him a couple of messages thanking him, I haven't been able to connect yet, but this is a very, very important board. May I have a motion?
Second.
Uh, Ken, can you say a few words?
Sure, thank you. Well, for me, it's a repeat visit. I was on the board up till a couple of years ago, Hatchimer Vice Chair, and we got a lot of important work done on the time I was there and there's a lot of to continue, uh, working on the portfolios and so forth, so I'm looking forward to working with Carolyn, if she's going to stay on or whoever else is on that board. And it's humbling to be asked to, to participate and help out in the town that you live in and love, so thank you very much.
And thank you so much for doing this. Carolyn Trubuco says that you're the architect of a lot of the things that she has worked on over the past few years. And it's great to have you on board, especially now with some challenges now that our outside investment advisor has, has been sold and the purchaser has decided not to continue that business, so you'll be helping her spearheading the process of looking for a new, a new outside investment officer. Do we have any, any other comments? Uh, any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous, thank you so much, Ken. E, Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, this also requires RTM approval. LM Fatehi, we, I think it goes by Ellie, and 98 Flora Boulevard, term 11/23 to 11/27, and she's replacing Joe Pagnazzi, whose term expired and really thank Joe very, very much. I know he put a lot of effort into this, so, you know, he's did his two terms and he's a really great public service servant, so motion to approve?
Second.
Ellie, would you like to say a few words?
Just want to say appreciate the opportunity from all three of you, so thank you. And I'm hoping to leverage some of my experiences with working with the green team and I do have to thank these two gentlemen right here, Mr. Tassani, Mr. Papa George for just everything with the green team and moving some of our sustainable initiatives within town and I'm hoping to be able to leverage some of that with this mission, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ellie. This is a really important board and as, as we've discussed, the industry is a little bit in flux right now, so it'll be interesting, sort of what, what you learn and what, you know, the advice that you and the rest of the board can, can give us on recycling. But I know that's a big issue, so any other comments?
Just want to thank Ellie for stepping up and serving. You know, got to know her through PTA and her service on the green teams and thank her for work at Arena as we've heard from the last budget cycle to some of the challenges with recycling. You know, we really need to do a comprehensive look at it for this town, just from a cost perspective and just for environmental perspective, so I thank you for your passion and your willingness to step up and serve.
Yeah, I want to thank you too and obviously it's a big deal. It's, it's an issue statewide, there's a lot of complicated issues. Bucky Marsilio, if you want to tap into him, he has a lot of experience in solid waste and recycling. There's bills that have been floating around legislature over the last couple of years. There's a serious, serious issue headed our way with recycling issues because of the cost and how China doesn't process it anymore and it's really become an issue and they're not addressing it really fully in the legislative side of it. Hopefully, maybe the Commission could push some of our, our legislators to start working on that with some of that experience that Bucky has because it's actually going to be very expensive if we don't get a hold of it and it's a statewide issue. So maybe do some collaboration with our state delegation, just some advice as well.
I, I may call you later.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
Just voting.
Sorry, what?
We have a motion and a second already.
Oh, oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Ellie. The next item is item number seven, these are first Selectmen reappointments and these are for information only.
For me?
Huh?
WPCA.
Okay. Did you vote? I'm not sure, okay.
Four years ago, I think.
It's a little unclear.
Remember to be perfectly honest.
Okay, well.
Look back, take care.
Item, item number F is Water Pollution Control Authority. The, the chart is a little bit unclear about whether or not we have to vote. Thank you. Thank you. But Water Pollution Control Authority, Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road, term 11/23 to 11/24, and she's replacing Nancy Leffkowitz, who's our former Selectman who put a lot of time into this authority, so thank you, former Select, Selectwoman Nancy Leffkowitz. May I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. So, um, we would like Christine, Christine, thank you for agreeing to, to do this. This is a big job and one of the more important jobs now, especially at this critical time for WPCA where so much investment has to be made and planned out over the coming years. Would you like to say a few words?
No, I, I appreciate that this is a very large job in front of us. There's a lot of work that needs to be done just from a long-term capital plan. I am looking forward to really relying on the Commission to learn a lot. I will be very honest that it's not in my wheelhouse, but, um, it needs focus. Ms. Leffkowitz, looking forward to taking up where she left off, but in terms of our long-term capital planning, I appreciate that it's been somewhat of a question mark what the long-term costs are going to be and I think that we need to get a, a better handle on that and I think that strengthening the relationship between other town departments and the WPCA is an important next step, so look forward to serving and I appreciate your confidence and just for the public's sake, a member of the Board of Selectmen does have to serve on this Commission, which is why this has been put forward.
I appreciate that and, you know, there was a lot of proposed changes to the charter during the last revision process, but this one wasn't proposed as a change and, and I know that Nancy, you know, I don't for whatever reason missed a lot of the WPCA meetings, but the reason the charter put it for one of the Board of Selectmen members to be on it was to report, you know, to the Board of Selectmen, to make reports, to give updates and not actually have a, you know, WPCA show up, but actually have our, our person, like our liaison, come and say, hey, here's what happened at the meeting, here are some of the projects they're talking about. And we were missing that, you know, for the public's certification too, right? So I know it's not in your wheelhouse, right, but it is, Matt's great, you're, you'll learn a lot from Matt. He's got a good head on his shoulders, he has a lot of experience in that area and, you know, I look forward to having your updates, you know, when, as, as, you know, maybe monthly, you know, to the Board and added to the agenda so we could, you know, get a full grasp because not everybody, and even the public, you know, I know not everybody watches the Board of Selectmen meetings, but it'd be nice to just know, you know, what's going on with it and just to give us an update monthly, so thanks so much, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, you know, the, the Chief Financial Officer is also ex officio on, on that Water Pollution Control Authority and they should be active as well. All, so motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous, thank you. Thank you so much for agreeing to do this. Next item, item number seven, these are first Selectmen reappointments and this is for information only. Conservation Commission, we are reappointing Richard Boucher, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Boucher. Thank you so much for agreeing to do another term. If you would like to speak, there would be, yeah.
Thank you for your continued trust. In my 50 years in Fairfield, lots have changed with the territory. And especially at the Conservation Commission in the last few years, it's become more than a regulatory commission. Our mission now is not only to regulate, but more to inform and educate. And you can see that through the website, through some of the literature that we have and even exhibiting in our day. Supporting the public and helping them make informative decisions about their environment. Much of this, by the way, is really driven by Director Tim Bishop. He's got a spearhead, just big applications, so. Thank you both for the opportunity.
Thank, thank you so much for, for stepping up to do another term. You were highly, highly recommended by, by multiple people, so thank you for doing that. Any other comments?
Just thank you. I know, I, the Commission's really come a long way over the last four years and we so you guys are doing some really good work. I really appreciate your service.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Actually, it's not a voting.
That's right.
Not a voting item, so there were no comments. Thank you so much, Richard, looking forward to talking to you. Catherine Mahoney, I'm not sure if Catherine is here, she's a reappointment and again, very highly recommended. Catherine, if you're on, if you want to say a few words, go ahead. Okay, otherwise, there was no need for her to be here today as a reappointment. Then D is Justin Beck for Economic Development for reappointment, 41 Beth Drive, term 11/23 to 11/28. Also very highly recommended by Mark Barnhart and really thank him for stepping up. If Justin, oh, Justin, I don't think we've, I'm not sure we we met very briefly once. Would you like to say a few words?
All right, so thank you, Brenda, for originally appointing me and it's been a pleasure to serve with a very effective leader, Mark Barnhart, who's here today. Uh, and we have a great group of people and folks working on our Commission and really enjoy volunteering. After my family contributing taxes for the last 55 years, I finally decided to participate in government. And also, in addition to working with Mark, our great team, I've also volunteered, well, more volunteer, it's a paid position with the Moderator and Assistant Registrar in the last two elections, so getting much more involved in our community affairs. So once again, I want to thank you for the reappointment and thanks again for allowing me to serve.
Thank you so much for stepping up for another term. Okay, well, next up is Parking Authority and Greg Alprin. Is Greg on the line? Sure, if, so Greg Alprin, 170 Lee Drive, term 11/23 to 11/28, and he's in his second term and we thank him very much for, again, willing to step up to do another term on that very important mission. All right, number eight, Town Clerk. All right, number eight, Town Clerk, appointment of sub registrars with the first selectmen approval. Thank you. This is again for information only. These are Farber, Duke, Yellow, Samuel Green, Kevin Lesko, Richard Miller, Brendan McCune, Frank Holt and Pamela Shaughnessy Banks. So, okay, thank you. Item number nine, Fire Chief, to hear and consider an act upon a master agreement between the state of Connecticut and the town of Fairfield regarding the installation of fire suppression, standpipe systems on bridges at various locations in the town of Fairfield. May I have a motion?
I'm off.
Chief McCarthy, thank you.
This document didn't end up in the packet, but I wanted to provide it to the board because it will give you a perspective on the scope of this issue across the state of Connecticut. On six bridges in Fairfield, the state has installed back in the late 90s standpipes. Purpose of the standpipes is convey water from a fire truck up to or down to limited access highway from a local wire fighter. Reason why that they were installed is our history over many decades demonstrated the impact of incidents on the highway when water supply was needed that we would, we, the fire departments that respond, would block 100% of the traffic. Those would be laid across six lanes of traffic, stopping traffic in full directions and creating a tremendous backlog, takes hours to clear. Anybody who's been on 95 is certainly aware of that. So we advocated as part of a traffic incident management program with the state that I served on to install standpipes on limited access highways so that we can clear incidents much quicker, have less of an impact on that. And if you remember back in the 90s, there was talk of adding a deck on the highway or widening the highway in Fairfield County, clearly options that were not feasible, affordable, and were never acted on. So we went back, what can we do to make the circumstances better? And standpipes was one of the resources. The state has required and is going back to the original installation municipalities to, at their own expense, maintain, inspect and test and maintain the standpipes on limited access highway. We, the fire chiefs have opposed it, opposed that, although many fire departments have signed the master agreement going back to 2001, but we have opposed it in concept because it's not our facility. It's a state facility on a federal highway. And the document that you have in front of you shows 63 municipalities with over 200 standpipe installations across the state. Having each of those 63 fire departments maintain the standpipes is not practical, it's not affordable, and it's not our burden to bear. There is not a state fire department. We respond to the highway and as part of our community, but it is our, it is our belief that this is a responsibility to state government. Myself and another chief, Chief Priest from West Hartford, appealed to the leadership at DOT last year and they absolutely refused to consider a change of policy. They have since sent out the master agreement requiring all municipalities to sign within 60 days, which that 60 days expires on the 23rd of December, two days from now. And they threatened to remove the standpipes from the highway if we don't sign the agreement. Our approach, we went to the Joint Fire Service Council for all fire departments, for the career volunteer, all fire service statewide organizations in the state of Connecticut. And in your packet, you have a letter from, from that organization to the state requesting that they reconsider. And we are appealing through CCM to advocate on the part of the municipalities to force DOT back to the table or seek funding through the legislature for this purpose. And just to give you an idea of the scope, we would have to arrange at our expense, arrow boards, traffic control, certified engineer, fire apparatus and law enforcement for traffic safety in order to test each one of these 200 standpipes across the state or six in the town of Fairfield. Because, I don't know the authority, I don't want to place the town at a liability by refusing to sign, I felt it was an important issue to bring to the board of selectmen for their affirmation of our position of appealing back to the state of Connecticut to reconsider their position.
So do you know how many states, how many municipalities are refusing to sign?
I don't know that. There have been several that have signed, but the majority have not signed. And just the size of the departments are come, you know, Bridgeport, Stanford, Hartford, Waterbury, so the biggest cities in the state of Connecticut. I think Winchester is on that list, one of the smallest in the state. Clearly different resources available to them. And we think that it's just inappropriate to demand of the municipalities to maintain state equipment on a state highway as part of the federal system. This has been reviewed by Attorney Piers, but I have not received any update from him as to his position, so then this should come before the board.
What does Attorney Piers recommend?
I think, I think for this, this is unusual. So I think, I believe that he understands your position and it's really not a legal position. It's more up to us to see how we can bring them to the table to bargain. But I do want to ask, so what have we been doing up till now? Has the state, the state wants these to be in place so that we don't have huge backups on public roads? So they're unlikely to remove them, right?
The whole purpose of quick clearance was to alleviate some of the concerns that the state of Connecticut had regarding fire department operations on the highway. So this was a reaction to their stated goal of quicker clearance for some of these incidents. I do believe that if we and other municipalities refuse to sign, that this will force the state back to the table to discuss other options and methods to appeal this. I don't believe that on Wednesday, a DOT crew will be out there removing them.
Because the whole state suffers, not Fairfield, right? So, and what, what was done to maintain these prior to this Wednesday? Were they not maintaining? Okay, so this is like a new, they want to start maintaining them now on our dime?
We have not, you know, there is no good mechanism for municipalities to get up on the highway. And as we've talked, most dangerous environment that we send our firefighters to, so we've been reluctant to embrace that or take up that responsibility, so.
And we don't have the skills to do it either, right?
The equipment to do it, but we don't have the technical skills, the expertise, you know, and we have to contract much of the work other than pumping water.
Any questions?
I would just, I mean, I would, I mean, so, okay.
Let me just offer that, you know, as the state actually sent a note to your office this afternoon asking about our position and reminding us of the deadline, I would report back to this board any change that occurs over the next month or two months as, you know, the state processes the lack of signatures coming from municipalities and what their stance on it is. So I think there is an opportunity for us to reconsider all of the issues as we work through the process.
I mean, I think this is, first of all, outrageous that the state expects us to maintain this when we're doing a service on the state highway. So, I mean, I personally, I think that the town attorney should draft a letter from you, to the Department of Transportation Commissioner, copying the governor and copying the state delegation and asking them to give, give us some more time to have a discussion on it, your administration more time. We, I don't think other towns are going to be now spending money to maintain this. This just doesn't seem right and it's not enough time, 60 days. And some of the other issues we've worked on over the last four years when the state was, you know, kind of putting their heel on our neck a little, you just, you know, call up, send a letter quickly and ask them to give you more time to get your arms around it and understand it better. Have the opportunity to talk to some of the other chief elected officials, see what they're, what they're going to be doing because we should not have to be paying for this and 60 days is not enough time. So that's my advice personally.
Let me give you, if I may, the perspective of the state legislature as it relates to limited access highway. State legislator, legislature in the last full session authorized payments to volunteer fire departments that respond to limited access highways and the amount of $500 per call that they respond to the highway, recognizing that it is a burden on these small departments to respond to I-95. So it's inconceivable that the legislature intends those departments that they're handing $500 to for response to the highway would then expect them in return to maintain equipment on the state highway. I think those two just don't.
Interesting.
The other?
We were to maintain this, any rough back of the envelope cost wise on an annual basis moving forward?
We would have to hire an engineer. The state resources that we would have to then pay for, an arrow board, a traffic annuator, state fleece for traffic control, overtime for the fire department. I think that, you know, a two-day, three, a two-day process to get them all tested would run legitimately somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000.
And liability. Liability.
Apply that by 63 departments statewide. I mean, there's a, a better way to accomplish this and more reliable outcomes by contracting, in my opinion.
So we have seven.
So the bottom one is incorrect. It actually should, you see that Brooke is listed twice, it's actually a Franklin entry.
Right, right. So I think excluding Franklin, one.
Ends at sunset.
Four, five, six, seven. Any other comments, public? Seeing none, all in favor?
First of all, the vote is to.
Is to approve. I will be, to approve the signing the contract, I'm going to be voting no on this.
So can we, okay, can we amend to say that we want to ask the state for additional time or something to that effect?
I don't know. And the attorney is not here. Do you think that that would be worthwhile, chief, to ask the, I mean, we're not really asking for additional time, we're asking to.
Disreject it.
Disreject it.
It has, there is a process that has started. The rejection, I think, is a statement and then we'll, we will then work through CCM to negotiate with DOT.
So I will be voting no. So.
You have a motion in a second and.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. So went to the public, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. No? Okay, unanimously not approved. Rejected, unanimously rejected. Thank you. Thank you very much. And yeah, keep, keep us informed, I'm sure you will. Item number.
Just kind of, just a follow up to Ms. Jett about next steps, just in terms of reaching out to get more time. I don't want to necessarily not meet a deadline, so I think that additional follow up is required on this issue. So if you, and I know we don't have a meeting, but if there's any, if you could just update us either by memo, just so we know what the next steps are in terms of the status of this.
Sure, so I will be getting updates regularly from the chief to hear what he's hearing. And I guess we will probably, I'll ask the attorney peers whether or not we should send a letter to the state just telling them our position.
Yeah, I think that would be good before the deadline, at least you have it on record and then just email the attachment so they have it.
That makes sense.
And let our state delegations copy on it.
And I think that you didn't vote, but I think the sense of that body is that we're in agreement on just wanting to be on the record.
It's a huge responsibility and they're asking us to do this in 60 days. It's unreasonable, completely unreasonable.
Yeah, thank you. So we're in agreement on all of that. And then item number 10, purchasing authority, to hear and consider authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Gilbane Building Company to provide all management services necessary to perform the pre-construction phase for HVAC upgrades at various Fairfield Public Schools as detailed in RFP 2023-121 in an amount not to exceed $1,005,700 to provide all necessary services for the construction phase at a fee not to exceed 2.1% of the estimated cost of work, which shall be converted to a lump sum upon mutual agreement of a project guaranteed maximum price at an amount not to exceed $1,626,190 for construction managers' general conditions, costs based on an 18-month construction schedule. Funding for this contract is available in account 2600-9010-5700-FY226. Phase one, AC at schools, may I have a motion? Okay, salute. And are we going to hear from, I guess this would be David Becker, are you on the line for the building committee, for the HVAC committee? David?
This is, Adam Toolen is here, I'm calling in. I can speak on this briefly too.
Oh, Adam Toolen, is that, was that Adam? Adam?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just state briefly that this actually did previously go before the board over the summer, but there ended up being delay in getting some additional feedback from Gilbane. So after talking with Attorney Piers, we thought it was the most appropriate thing to bring this back for a vote again. So there were just some minor changes Attorney Piers has reviewed at this point. So, you know, everything has already been vetted out and approved from the, you know, the purchasing perspective. If there are any specific questions, I will say Gilbane has already been participating in the process sort of in lieu of a contract. But yeah, if there's any specific questions, maybe Mr. Becker can respond to that, but I just wanted to add those comments.
I have no questions on this. None? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous, thank you very much for that. The next, thank you. We still have, is anyone from engineering here?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Okay, number 11, Engineering Manager, requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. To hear, consider and act upon a resolution amending and restating a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Appropriating $3,729,800 for the Costs Associated with the Replacement of the Duck Farm Road Bridge, Authorizing Grants to Reimburse $2,983,840 Such Appropriation and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance a Portion of Such Appropriation. To Increase the Appropriation by $3,819,176, Increase the Grant Authorization to $3,023,341 and Increase the Bond Authorization to $795,835." May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hurley, do you want to walk us through?
Okay, yeah, I will. And just to, if you guys know that the bond council's here as well, if you have any questions on the actual resolution. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather today, so I wasn't able to come. But the construction of the Duck Farm Road Bridge has been completed and the next phase now is the project closeout. The proposed revised resolution is to match the final project authorization letter agreement. Is to, yeah, it's to match the resolution with the final project. Is to, yeah, it's to match the resolution with the final project authorization letter. This involves an increase in project costs of eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, but also involves an increase in grant funding of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and one dollars. And this would increase the town share funding of approximately forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, but does not include credits such as the Aquarian reimbursement of forty thousand dollars and any minor or moderate project adjustments. So overall, the town, additional town share costs are anticipated below ten thousand dollars for a four, about a four million dollar project and could even be lower pending the unused extra work components or the final audits, which will be completed in a couple of years. This revised agreement has included all the known construction phase costs and already has been approved by the state and federal government for any adjustments related to the project. And we are eligible, the town is eligible for eighty percent reimbursements with the exception of the Aquarian Water Company utility work. As a little bit of background, the project and the preliminary project authorization letter, which was signed back in twen, or was presented in two thousand and twenty-one, was used to obtain funding so that the project could go out to bid. The proposed or final resolution and the project authorization are necessary based on the additional project costs and additional grant money provided to the town. These agreements are based on final and closeout costs documented from the project and approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation and the Federal Bridge Program.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stasram, is there anything you'd like to say or?
No, this is a, this is a, looks a little more convoluted than it actually is. It does what it normally does at any resolution where there's a grant, first we authorize. I would just say this looks a little more convoluted than it actually is. I took, follows the normal format we do in a bond resolution with a grant, we authorize an appropriation, we authorize a receipt of the grant and we authorize the bonding for the remainder. And the only wrinkle here, I think, is this originally started out as an eighty-twenty project, eighty state twenty, then there's forty thousand that is not eligible for the grant. I think Mr. Hurley is indicating that that's a discussion to be had with Aquarian for that. So this is in the normal form, we usually approve with that little bit of.
Fantastic, thank you, any other questions or comments?
No.
Any, going out to the public, any, any comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye, aye, unanimous, thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you.
Stasram, and. We'll be seeing you a lot, thank you. Item number twelve, to hear, first selectmen to hear, consider and approve dates for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four for Board of Selectmen meetings twice a month on a Wednesday at four P M via Webex and in person in the first floor conference room in Independence Hall, seven twenty-five Old Post Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, January third and thirty-first, February fourteenth and twenty-first, March thirteenth and twenty-seventh, April tenth and seventeenth, May first and twenty-ninth, June twelfth and twenty-sixth, July tenth and twenty-fourth, August seventh and twenty-eighth, September eleventh and twenty-fifth, October ninth and twenty-third, November sixth and twentieth, December fourth and eighteenth, may I have a motion? Okay, any, any comments?
Just for the January third, thirty-first, I imagine, I could foresee us needing to do business sometimes during that month. Just putting it out there for the public that we would then have to add a special meeting to our calendar, just for clarification. You know, it's almost a good amount of time for the month of January.
Right.
I appreciate you moving back to Wednesday, well, I, I don't, it's not helpful to me in any way, I just, I think it helps the whole process.
I think so too, with the approval for the other town boards.
Makes sense.
Any, oh.
Yeah, I, if I can have a public comment?
Wow, Bill.
Yeah, just on this one, I just, and I've, I've talked to Bill about this, but just wanted on record there where one of the things that from a town employee standpoint though is having the order of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and then the R T M all like in the same month that you could pass through the projects, grants or any, you know, anything that is proposed in a month, but now by doing it on a Wednesday, I just hope the Board of Finance or there's a way to have it in, in order so that we don't have to like approve, the Board of Finance approve things pending Board of Selectmen approval. If that's okay, then of course I'm fine with it, but I, I just wanted to point out my opinion on that.
Yes, and I think these dates are meant to be now moved instead of the day before they are the week before the Board of Finance meetings so that the Board of Finance now has a full week to review, you know, what we've done on the Board of Selectmen. And I believe that can keep it within a month. Yeah, so I think, I think that we're, we're okay from that respect, Mr. Hurley.
Okay.
That's the way we've always done it, we only moved it to Mondays because of Selectman Flynn's schedule at the time. So the, the town's historical has always been Wednesday, so I, I mean, I don't think there'll be a problem. It's the way it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor say aye, aye, thank you, unanimous. First selectmen to approve Board of Selectmen budget meeting dates for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four at eleven A M via Webex and in person in the first floor conference room in Independence Hall, seven twenty-five Old Post Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. A, the Board of Selectmen public budget hearing dates, February twenty-sixth, Monday, uh, ten A M, which is the Board of Selectmen public budget hearing number one, February twenty-seventh, Tuesday, ten A M. Board of Selectmen public budget hearing number two, February twenty-eighth, Wednesday, ten A M. Board of Selectmen public budget hearing number three, if needed, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Any comment on this item? Any comment, any, any comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, unanimous, thank you. B, Board of Selectmen final budget deliberations and vote, public executive session, March fourth, Monday, ten A M. And that. Do I have a motion? Okay, any discussion?
So I'm wondering, that is three days in a row, you know, now that people have other full-time jobs, you know, I'm thinking, do you think maybe we could move, maybe even the last meeting? To maybe during the day?
So you're talking about the fourth?
Right, because we're looking at like pretty much three full days of.
Of ten A M. I have no objections to you.
No objection to doing it later in the day?
Yeah, what, what time would be?
Well, I'm trying to think, we did it last, I mean, obviously it's different members, so it probably won't be as long. But. I don't know, like afternoon, morning, people can get morning work done. I don't know, like.
Is that all right with you?
Two o'clock?
Is that okay for, with you?
On a Monday, it's fine for me.
Later on a Monday is better.
Or, or?
Okay, let's do that.
So we have to amend this?
Make a motion to amend item B to move the time to four P M on March fourth.
Say it, okay, seconded, Ms. Vitale, all in favor say aye.
Aye, take the public.
Oh, sorry, go to the public, anyone from the public have any comments on moving the March fourth, Monday, ten A M, final budget deliberations meeting to four o'clock? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no, so.
Thank you.
Four o'clock, and I believe we still have to vote on this, right? So we are voting on the March fourth, Monday, four o'clock, four o'clock P M meeting. Most into, do I have a motion? As amended. The comment, okay, all in favor, public, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Item fourteen, to consider a tax collector, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of twenty-six thousand one hundred and ten dollars and fifty-four cents, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, any comment? Go to the public, any comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, approved, unanimous. Item fifteen, to hear, consider and act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting, may I have a motion? Or do I need a motion?
No, just to open it up to the board.
Okay, well.
I just wanted to just, if I could have a moment of personal privilege, I want, I didn't have a, I didn't think to acknowledge at our first meeting, well, for my first meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge to our residents, a sincere thank you. I, after my last newsletter that I sent out to the community, I was just like blown away by the amount of emails, the kind, very, very kind, thoughtful, sincere emails. There were so many of them, hundreds literally, that it took me a while and I think I may have missed some people, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you so much because it was really very, very nice for people to take the time to write such kind words. And so I just wanted to make that mention, thank you for giving me that opportunity. I did want to bring up the Penfield issue because I had asked Jennifer if you would please put it on the agenda because when the Penfield passed the three boards back last year, earlier this year, the Board of Selectmen had requested that there be monthly updates provided to them and as well as the public, so we didn't have one in November, obviously, and so I had asked Jennifer to ask you to put it on and she said that you didn't want to put it on. And so I, I'm a little concerned about that because, and the reason I am concerned is because there's been articles in the paper about it and some of the comments that I'm reading in these articles and, and, and people are now calling me saying what is going on. And I'm like, I don't know, what's happening today, so I would had hoped to that Mr. Bremer who's been working on this from the beginning and Mr. Gazal, the engineer, could provide the board with an update as well as the public. There is some concerning issues here because I understand by reading in the paper that you were talking about a flood study and listen, that was something that was put in with the, with the appropriation. But I just wanted to be clear that, you know, you have an N O V on this property and FEMA is requiring us to lower the elevation to eight feet, pre-two thousand and fourteen, which, you know, is, is the, is the law, so regardless of, of, if the building stays in place, which is an expensive building and is estimated, you know, I don't know, ten million dollars, we still owe seven point five million on it, we just rebonded three million last year to cover the loss of the FEMA grant. I mean, I read actually a quote from you that you were thinking about knocking the building down, so obviously I have grave concerns about this because as you know, we put a lot of time and effort, we spent hundreds and hundreds of hours negotiating with FEMA. It was brutal. And they expect us to comply with the law. So I just, you know, even if, even if it's true that that is your intent, that you want to knock the building down because it may be more expensive than, than it was originally proposed as, which are most items really, because we're living in an inflationary environment, literally, look at the H V E C stuff that came out of the Board of Ed, I mean, that stuff all went up too. Everything's going up, every day you go to the store, it goes up. So I think it's an obligation for your administration to bring forward if there is a change in the cost, to bring that through the three town bodies who actually voted in favor of of, of complying with the N O V and, and maintaining, having a pavilion at the beach. So I just, I really feel like this is an important issue that needs to be discussed publicly. You need to have the engineers who, and, and the people who have been working on it for all this time provide updates because this is a huge project in our town, I mean, I've seen your citizens calling me saying, what's going on, are they going to knock the building down? I want to, I love sitting on that deck, I love Penfield Pavilion. You know, I don't want to use a portage on, you know, I don't want to knock down the building. And also, we're talking about losing revenue, so listen, I, I don't really know what's going on, I just know what I, whatever. So I think it's important for us, you know, in, in an effort for transparency, that's why we did the Penfield updates, so that everyone could hear them.
I mean, I could address all.
Black woman, you know, Lefkowitz had demanded it basically, and I was more than happy to comply.
I can, I can address all of your concerns. First of all, the reason I didn't put it on this agenda is because there is a very, very important update that we'll be getting this week on the flood resiliency study, but, you know, and, and that, we will then communicate with the public the results of that and as well as any additional costs that we might see as trying to offset the issues related to lowering the beach to eight feet. Definitely very cognizant of the N O V. We are currently in, in a little bit of a holding pattern through January and the reason for that is we've remediated eight hotspots with, with hazardous, you know, or, or, you know, the PCBs, those go off to a special, you know, special facilities that can process them and those facilities are full up for the year, their quotas have been met. There's one additional hotspot that was found, not with PCBs, but I'm told it's with P A Hs, so we are on hold until we can remediate that hotspot and we won't be able to do that until the new year. So in January, we're going to remediate that last hotspot and then hopefully we will not have any more hotspots like that in, in, in the Penfield, under or around Penfield. We also have bids that are good through mid-January, maybe sometime mid-January, I don't have the exact date. So right now, I think what you're hearing from me is that I, for, for the, for the public and for the, for the grand list, which, you know, the, the, the houses in that area, it's always been, and this is something I, I've always concerned about for, for a long time, is that I need to know what the coastal engineers are going to say about this flood resiliency study and whether or not, not just the hundred year storm, but also the ten and the twenty-five and the fifty year storm, what the impact of lowering the beach to eight feet is. And I do understand, we have to lower the beach to eight feet to comply with the N O V, fully aware of that, that will be done. One way or another, that beach is going down to eight feet in compliance with what FEMA requires to, to dispose of this N O V. The issue is, once, with, with our current plan with the building there, we may or may not, but probably may not, have an opportunity to engineer that length of beach again back up, maybe never, to eleven or twelve feet. And so what I want to hear from the coastal engineers is how damaging that commitment of keeping the building there could be to home values and safety in that area. That was a study, I believe, should have been done, you know, years ago, not just for the hundred year storm, we've really focused on that because, you know, Not just for the hundred-year storm, we've really focused on that, because, you know, there's been sort of an attitude that when the hundred-year storm comes along, it's gonna wipe everything out, no matter what we do. There was a Army Corps of Engineers studies that came up with some astronomical number to sort of guard, to try to, you know, to increase resiliency against the hundred-year storm, and it was gonna cost seven hundred million dollars, I think we all understand that that's not feasible, but there is really a lot of concern about the lesser storms, ten, twenty-five, and fifty. And so, what I want to hear from RACE is that we are not doing permanent harm to our ability to increase the resilience of the coastline by sort of permanently bringing this beach down to eight, and taking away any possibility of, of, I think what the Flood and Erosion Control Board had wanted was over time to be able to raise, engineer the beaches up to higher levels and fill those, those holes, but as of now, you know, the plan is to move ahead with the project. And I, I do owe it though, which will be, which will, according to the engineers, to the construction company, will start at the end of January. The only, the only thing that would stop that from happening is if I get a report that says this would be a really bad move from the part of the town, and because we'll never be able to increase the resiliency of that area, and would be, you know, sort of detrimental to the long-term safety and values of the properties in that area, but otherwise, you know, the plan is to move ahead.
So, to, to better understand, so we were working on the hotspots, and those were well-known and talked about for the past, whatever, over a year. A PHA is basically, it's amazing I know all this stuff, but if you were to test along any road in this town, it would be PHA, because anything from asphalt has PHA. But regardless, we do have bids that are gonna expire in the middle of January, and I just want to just really caution, and I know that this is new for you, but FEMA doesn't, you know, listen, I've spent a lot of time with this federal agency, and any sort of wavering on complying with an NOV could seriously jeopardize every single person in the flood zone.
Yeah, yeah.
And as we've known, we talked about this, right, so RACE, I was very familiar with the RACE study, they've done extensive studies, this was just to update their study, and you're right, it's extraordinarily expensive, basically, the, the stuff they had worked on years ago, you know, whatever, how many, how long ago, this is to update it. But we would still, regardless, if we knock this building down, which I one hundred percent disagree with, because three boards voted to do that, it just doesn't make sense to knock it down. But to me, we still have to lower the beach grade to be in compliance.
We do.
So, I just want to make sure that you're conveying this information, maybe, you know, I know the newsletters have been a little light, there haven't been a lot of communication and transparency in them, but this is the kind of stuff, I think our community, I tried very hard to be very detailed, put in every spink of information that we worked on, links, here's this, here's that, so that everybody has an opportunity to read what's going on, get an update about what's happening, and I think that would be really vitally important for an update after your meeting with RACE. But again, and I, I respect the Flood and Erosion Board, I understand, but they are laypeople, engineers working on this stuff, these are people who really know this stuff, and we have FEMA who's crawled upside, in inside, and out of this project a thousand times, and so I think it's, it's the responsibility of your administration to send out an update to the community, I, I shouldn't have to be asking for a Penfield update.
Yeah, just let me.
At a meeting, it shouldn't be.
Let me say that we're gonna have an update at the next meeting that includes a lot of information, there was not, there's been no real change in the information, other than there are two, one is that the costs have come in one, one and a half million higher, so the project cost is about thirteen million dollars now, so that's a change, and I agree, we've had a lot worse escalations of costs in other projects. And the other one, the other update is that, I mean, the project team does not want to start the work until the ninth hotspot's been remediated, so that'll happen hopefully within the first few days of, of, of January. And there's no plans to not move ahead, and we will, we will the terms of the NOV, I mean, that, that we know has to happen. And really, the NOV is to make sure the beach grade goes to eight feet. The problem I have is that I believe this study should have been done years ago, so that we would have known exactly what the costs, or at least had an idea of what the costs of maintaining the beach at eight feet would be, because RACE is going to propose some offsetting resilient, we're expecting some offsetting resiliency measures that we may be able to implement that are not seven hundred million dollars, but, you know, other, other, other potential ways of offsetting the lowering of the beach during that, for that four hundred-foot stretch, and I think, I think it's only fair and reasonable to sort of see those numbers, I would never, I would have done that study years ago and made sure that that was incorporated into any decision-making process, because ultimately, if it's ten, ten million dollars, or whatever, we would have definitely considered other options for that building, and I, I agree, it's a great building, and we should have a building, may not have been there, it may have been somewhere else, but these are things that we didn't really have the opportunity to assess, so I don't know if we're gonna have the, the time to, to assess it in, in a really short period of time, but that's where we are right now.
Right, and I mean, there were studies there.
May, may we let Christine?
I just finished in response to that, there were lots of studies done on the resiliency, and there was ARPA money that was put toward resiliency studies for, through the flood and erosion, so there were studies, there's been actually numerous studies. Again, I think that, that some people just don't want to accept the fact that FEMA has certain regulations, and believe me, I was the first select person, so I know, I got the emails, I know you're getting them now too, saying ignore FEMA, sue FEMA, don't listen to FEMA, and, you know, lowering it to their grade is gonna ruin everybody's, you know, this and that and the other, and listen, I, listen, I'm not an engineer, there was a ton of studies done. We didn't get the letter, we didn't uncover the denial of the appeal, of the appeal until late, much later, after I came into office, and after COVID, it wasn't like we knew about it day one. It was uncovered later, because FEMA was like, hey, remember this NOV, and we're like, we never saw it, because we weren't here. So, there's a cascading effect here, there was a lot of things that happened. The bottom line is, is that no one's not trying to not do resiliency issues, I just concerned because of the comments in the newspaper, you know, saying, you know, I, I might want to tear it down, I mean, that was in a quote. And then, you know, my phone starts ringing, and people are like, what in the hell's going on, so I'm not trying to be combative, I'm just trying to understand, and, and also allow our community to be, to be updated in a transparent way about exactly what's going on. So, I would just encourage you, if you would, after your meeting with RACE, if you could work with your chief of staff to write an update, like I used to do with my chief of staff, on, on, I, sometimes I would just send a Penfield update, wouldn't be anything, it wouldn't be the whole newsletter like we normally did, but it would be specific updates, we do fill pile updates, we do Penfield updates, we do things that were relevant to the, to the time. So, I just think it's important, because people are asking, and there's, are these articles floating around, and so people are like, you know, what's going on, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, and I'd like to let Christine Vitale, like, like, let her speak.
I just had so much time invested in the project.
I know, I know, you do.
Made more time.
I've invested time in it too.
Wanted to spend on anything.
I've invested a lot of time.
Along with the fill pile.
I've invested a lot of time in it too, but not as much as you.
Oh, no. Okay, sorry.
I very much appreciate the request for a Penfield update, actually shared. I think that without the absence of a building committee, if this project had gone to a building committee, all of these discussions would have been happened in a public setting, and the public would have been able to access through a building committee. I understand, just for expediency, didn't go that direction, and I would want the Board of Selectmen to be updated, whether it's once a month, or as new information is, is coming to the administration, I would actually prefer that. I think the communication should come to us. I think newsletters are great, I appreciate your newsletter, I appreciate your newsletter, but not everybody gets it, and it doesn't take the place of what is shared in a public meeting, that's on the public record, people can watch it on VR TV, it's in the minutes, I don't want the newsletter to necessarily get ahead of just proper government. So, RACE, from what I'm understanding, from what you're saying, that expecting a study back in the next week or so?
Yeah, this.
So, do you foresee it being on our January third agenda?
I do.
Do you foresee RACE coming?
I do.
And presenting?
I do.
So the public knows, because I know a lot of people have, you know, feelings about this, and just to put it out there, and in terms of the newsletter, just letting people know that we're expecting the study, and it's going to be presented to the Board of Selectmen on January third. And I do know that you did kind of give an update on the hotspots in previous newsletters, just so people know that what's going on with the fencing, because we're all getting questions. And right now, it really sounds like it is the status quo, and we're just waiting for more information.
Yes, but I think, you know, first, former selectwoman Kupchik, first selectwoman Kupchik is right, that I do feel strongly that if this study shows that we could do long-term damage, because this study, we have not had a lot of resiliency studies, we had one that was a hundred-year storm study done by the Army Corps of Engineers, but we have not had, and the reason we have this current study is it's, it's a study of the coast, the, the eight-foot, the lower levels of beach, elevations of beach along the coast, and it's going to discuss, hopefully, I haven't seen it yet, but what, what could possibly happen along this four hundred-foot stretch, what we could protect ourselves against reasonably in something less than a hundred-year storm. And I just have to be honest, that it could, and, and hopefully propose ways to mitigate any incremental risk from taking that beach permanently down to eight, eight, eight-foot elevation in compliance, in necessary compliance with the FEMA NOV. If, and so I wouldn't want to say, I believe that we made mistakes in moving the way we did without considering those things, and I would be remiss in saying that, you know, if I didn't say, that I think I would like, hopefully, have the opportunity over the next couple of weeks, to get comfortable that we're not doing long-term damage to, to our, 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 the very valuable, you know, properties along the coastline. And if I can get comfortable with that, or if I can get some feedback that we can increase, offset the resiliency that we're gonna be losing by lowering the beach, there may be ways to do that at a reasonable price and reasonable ways, I, I definitely do want that building there, and I, I hope that's the outcome.
No, I appreciate that, and, you know, just to be clear, it's not about anyone's personal wants, I didn't ever start the whole thing, because I wanted to do anything, we had a notice of violation, and I was just complying with the law. And so, as far as whatever comes out of this RACE study, or whatever it is, I, I think it's incumbent, it's not really a decision that I think you're tasked with, because we had three boards vote on it, so it would, in my opinion, in, in a democracy, you would have to bring it through and ask for, here's what the changes are, do you approve them or not?
Yeah.
It's not a unilateral decision.
And I, I agree, it's complicated, the, what, what I thought we were approving, it turned out that that design now was believed to, the, the building would have collapsed, so you know, what, even though that wasn't the wording in the resolution, it turned out the design that we walked through during the approval process was one that was not feasible, so the, the design has been changed, and hopefully, and I, I would also like to have another firm, you know, look at it, make sure that this time, you know, that everyone is comfortable, this is the right way to do it, so we can get a, maybe a third opinion again, because we've gone from a design initially years ago that didn't work, a design that we're using the similar technique of horizontal grid beams, that apparently also would not have worked, but we approved, and a redesign based on helical piles, that, you know, they weren't specifically approved, even though they weren't actually described in the resolution, but that was what we were told was gonna, the, the horizontal grid beams was what was described to us during the approval process. So, it makes me worried, I think I'm gonna get, try to get another engineering firm to ensure that we have it right this time, I feel more comfortable with that.
Oh, just, yes, and I understand, and listen, we, we, listen, we spent, I spent, like, again, thousands of hours with engineers, I'm not an engineer. But I just want to be very cautious, that whatever you're doing, and whatever timeline you.
As the, really in charge here, and we have.
Listen, if there's some resiliency ideas, I think that's great, listen, that's why we added the study to it, we, listen, we still have to move, we have to comply with the law, regardless, if you want to add resiliency money down the line, that was our original intent, beautiful, let's do that, so let's have those discussions and bring it through the boards. But I would caution you about waiting too long, or going off what we told FEMA we were doing, and when we were doing it, because we're very sensitive to that.
We don't have a lot of time, I, I agree.
And I know, I think.
Not have a lot of time.
Worry is, like, the debt, like, when they expires on these bids. So, just be, all I'm saying is, just please be careful.
I wish we were, I wish we had more time, but we don't, so we are not gonna.
I get it, and there's never enough time, so. And I do, I would, I would push back a little, I have to tell you, if you look at the viewership rate of a Board of Selectmen meeting, even on VR TV, doesn't come close to the open room on, on, on a newsletter, and, and posting it on the website, people actually read the thing, and they could download links, and they could really take the time to understand, then they could always ask questions, and email and ask more questions, so I wouldn't discount it, I think there's two options here, I do think, and I would request, that we have a monthly Penfield update, because of the scope of the project, it's really important. And I think it's valuable for, for us, because basically it's our board. And then I just think it's simple, you just, you put together a newsletter update with your chief of staff and send it up, and then post it on the town website.
And not at all, not at all debating that it shouldn't go in the newsletter, I just want to make sure, to your point, that this should be coming before the Board of Selectmen
Absolutely.
For oversight, and I'm, I just worry that if information goes out in the newsletter first, that somehow it may not make it to us, so.
Can't go.
In, in information, and, and in multiple formats, I think it's great. It sounds like right now that it's going to be on the agenda for our next meeting, we're gonna get that in.
Send us one up, after the RACE meeting, just the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and, and, and it was my intention to talk about this today, under new business, only because the updates that I have, I mean, I guess it was valuable explaining my, my, my thinking, but there really are no real updates, other than the overage, the one point five million overage, which at this point, I'm not sure if that's big news, so I was planning on updating the board at the next meeting, and, and just running through what I just ran through, under new business, and I definitely agree, we should have a monthly update going forward.
And even if you think you have new information, just for a point of information for the public, even if it's for you just to tell us, you know, nothing's happening right now, because all of the sites are filled, and we can't get rid of this contaminated fill into the new year, it can be that, not necessarily looking for a big discussion on this, and if we put it on the agenda as an update, at least members of the public could potentially look at our agenda and say, oh, maybe I'll just listen to hear what's going on.
Fine, yeah, yeah, okay, good, I also want to, the public, I want the public to know that it's my intention at the next board meeting to accept the racial equity and justice blueprint into the record, and we're gonna have, hopefully, members of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force here, and and I hope people can attend, and, you know.
When's our next meeting?
January third.
January third. So that, I'm, I'm very excited to do that.
Just as a point of information, we obviously were working on this, and we had hired the consultant Baker Carr, and he did a lot of work, we spent a lot of time and a lot of meetings with HR and, and, I mean, the, the task force was disbanded. They, they are not a task force anymore, they gave their blueprint, and it was handed over to a professional who reviewed it and wrote items, I'm assuming you've already read his report, because we were just about to do that right after the elections, but, so you have that report, and you have that information. I think it's valuable to have him come in. Um, I think it's valuable to have him come and discuss um, his work. He is a professional, this is his area of expertise, is what he does. And this is what we paid for him to do. Uh, the task force did already submit their final report and they were disbanded. Um, and so it was up to the administration now to take Paul and have an expert, which more, Ms. Dr. Nelson is, um, and write an action report to, to the town. Um, I know there was a lot of, it's very complicated in detail, but personally, I'd like he, him to come to the board. If, if we're having somebody who, you know, is a professional, they should, he should be here to report to the board. Because I'm interested in, I mean, the last time I met with him was probably a few weeks before the election or whatever it was. Um, but I'd like to hear what he's, what he's up to and what his report is. You know, his final report.
Um, I, you know, I don't know what his schedule is, but um, I, I'm just, for now, I will take that into consideration.
He's asking, he's the one we hired.
Yeah, I have met, actually, I've met with him and, and I've um, heard what, had a discussion with them. Very, very nice person. Um, but I, I just want to make sure that people know it's my intention to read, to, to, to accept um, the blueprint into the record at the next meeting. And yes, it's been, uh, the, the task force has been disbanded, disbanded. But um, I, I've been uh, hearing from a lot of people, they would, they would like to at least have that accepted into the record. Any other, other comments?
No, but it would be helpful if we could um, schedule uh, Maurice to or could provide him an update just to, to board, you know, on email what his, if you met with him, I'm, I'm assuming he updated the, the, his report that he was working on based on blueprint and then he had lots of meetings with HR, so.
Yes.
I'm just curious about how, how it's going.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, well, I'll give him a call. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Just before, um, I wish everybody on a Happy New Year, happy hot.
Yeah, happy.
Holidays. Thank you to all of our town employees, our teachers, our Fairford School's employees. I hope everybody enjoys the um, the break, the break from meetings and the break from school and enjoys time with family.
Very nice. And I, I want to say, I hope everyone had a lovely Hanukkah, uh, who celebrate. And um, I'm sorry I missed the menorah lighting, but my husband and I went on a trip.
Nice.
I'm not gonna lie. And um, and I wish uh, Merry Christmas to both of you and uh, Happy New Year. And um, and, and, and happy holidays to all of our employees who are stupendous. They do such a great job. So, Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, um.
And I can't believe Christmas.
Right around the corner.
Happy at all.
And I want to say, my first few weeks here have been really fun. Um, this is one of the most interesting jobs I've ever had. Um, it's using every area of my brain and I, I love it. And um, just, uh, I want to say happy uh, Hanukkah to everyone. I'm belated happy Hanukkah to people that I didn't get to say that to in person. And um, Merry Chris, Merry Early Christmas and um, Merry Early Happy New, uh, Happy New Year to everyone. So um, we'll see you in the new year. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so adjourn.